Clock, is that what you have?
That's what I have.
Okay, I'd like to call the order. Uh, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands. Liberty and justice for all. All right, any discussion on the agenda? Is there any discussion on the agenda or looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the gen.
Second, Patrick.
Louis Ryman here, second.
Motion by Mike, I believe, and I have no idea who seconded it.
Yeah, sorry.
Louis did. Okay, to accept the agenda, favor say aye.
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 Pose. Passed. Agenda is approved. Um, next up is the minutes. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes from the March 18th, 2021 virtual meeting?
I make a motion to approve them. Early.
Early Herbert makes.
Second, Mike Flynn.
Mike Flynn seconds it. Any discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Passed. Okay. Now we'll go into the new business, which is the petitions. We will start with docket PC 04152101.
Commissioner, or excuse me, uh, Mr. Chair, you might want to call upon the, those who are listening. There might be somebody with the TV on or some extraneous noise that is causing some issues in the background to um, try to edit that or else mute themselves.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, if you have noise in the background, either give you can turn it down, please, or uh, mute yourself. It should be a button on the lower left-hand side of your screen uh, to mute yourself unless you have to talk and then you can unmute yourself. Is that better?
Not yet.
Okay. Let's start over again. Um, new business, the docket. The first petition is docket PC 041521-01.
Okay, this is Eric Johnson, Winona County's only administrator. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, the important notation with this is it's actually a conditional use permit that's twofold in nature. The first is to allow a new building site on less than 40 acres. That's uh, uh, the first one. And also simultaneously since a new house will be built within 300 feet of a public waters of a shoreland feature, that is a, an additional category which requires a conditional use permit. And if you're looking at the PowerPoint slides, uh, the citations from the ordinance um, are on that header page. The property owner is Craig Spies, current owner, and there's, I believe his daughter is Shannon, and there's also a representative Jeff Rig, who I believe is following along with this. So they will probably um, add comments after I give this quick presentation. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is the applicant's site plan. Uh, the red roughly shows the layout of the house in which uh, they wish to construct. Um, as we get into some of the additional mapping exhibits, uh, we've kind of shifted the house north a little bit on the landscape because of some of the natural features and some of the um, other concerns like floodplain and, and I'll get into that as well. But this uh, essentially shows the existing set of buildings, and this is roughly 10 and a third acres currently, and their desire is to split that 10 acre piece um, roughly in half and create five acres uh, with the new building site. Um, the distances show approximately, uh, the house would be roughly 230, 250 feet from the stream, roughly 150 feet from the road, which is to the north. And they would be, if they're drawing new property lines, they would need to meet new property line setbacks of 20 feet from the side, and um, that does appear to be met. Next slide. Again, I think maybe I just rattled through this uh, um, it's currently, uh, the location of the house is currently, it looked like it had been cropped. There was some corn stubble associated with it. Um, there is a number of different soil groups, and we'll get into some of the soil maps after this. Also, we did look at floodplain. Uh, we looked at the current 1984 maps as well as looking at the proposed new floodplain profile. And in this case, the flood boundary actually increased or went up the landscape a little bit. So we actually worked with the petitioners to try to assure that the new site would be out of a flood hazard area. Um, it appears to meet the other performance standards like feedlot setbacks. Next slide. Uh, applicants did meet with New Hartford Township and during the March township meeting, and their chair had indicated no comments in regards to that section. Um, we have heard um, uh, basically a, a verbal communication from a neighbor, and that neighbor was sent additional packet information, mainly inquiring on what the request was all about. So if that neighbor is also following tonight, uh, they may have some questions as well. Next slide. Uh, this is a LiDAR map that shows the 10-foot contours with the yellow line, and then the dotted brown or reddish colored are showing two-foot elevations. Uh, so this essentially shows the stream, and it shows, uh, you know, roughly the house would be positioned approximately 20 feet above the valley floor of where that stream is located. Next slide. Uh, this is showing the 1984, the current or existing floodplain. Next slide. This is showing what the new floodplain will look like. As you can see, that's increased slightly, and with the new floodplain data, we actually have cross-sections, and those numbers that show the red cross-section hatches. If we get a 100-year flooding event or a, a rain event of um, basically disaster or flood proportions, it's showing that the flood would flood out at ground elevations of roughly 769.35 uh, close to the building site.
Eric, uh, Lynn Carlson from the Planning Commission raised her hand. She may have a quick question for you.
Yes, um, when, when you were talking about the um, the dwelling elevation being 20 feet above the valley floor of the creek, did I hear that right?
Correct.
Okay, and then you were just starting to get into the, the flood zone stuff, and maybe I was a little premature, but um, the, I was curious to know, you know, what the, the highest floods, flood elevation has been in recent history. Um, and the 76935, I wasn't sure exactly what, what value.
It shaded that, I showed you a LiDAR map, that's elevations, that's uh, showing two-foot contours. So all the heavy lifting by FEMA and DNR has been implemented in these new shaded maps. So what they're showing with the one that's displayed now is where that elevation actually would be on the landscape in comparison to, to what a 100-year flooding event would look like. So based on this information, it, it appears that they would meet floodplain criteria based on uh, everything that we've seen.
Cause it's not the highest spot in the stretch. Is that correct? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, if I can go on to the next slide. Um, also of concern was um, this, this is roughly showing approximate 5.25 acres if they were to split it. By no means are they going to follow this. This was just a working example to snap what five, what roughly five acres would look like. And I overlaid the type twos and type threes, soil types, which are considered prime according to our definition in the Winona County zoning ordinance. So it, it is, it would be safe to assume, as I mentioned, a good part of that open field is tillable, and furthermore, it looks like clearly over 40% of the parcel is prime, which it is. So this was one other consideration that we had to work with, with the applicants to make sure they would not need a variance two to do this. So that's why the house site has now been kind of shifted in that open field area that it does not have the tan coloration on it. Um, next slide. Okay, a couple of comments. Project would add a home site for a family member by splitting or dividing a new parcel. Um, they're attempting to avoid prime farmland or floodplain, not, that shouldn't say floodway, should be floodplain. Um, couple of comment, consider all the testimony materials, uh, decision is to remeck. I can't see the, I guess the, the screen is covering part of it. Um, if the decision to recommend approval of the CUP staff has also included conditions in the fight, along with the legal providing uh, findings of fact uh, with this particular conditional use permit request. Um, next slide. Oh, that's conclusion, okay. With that, I guess I'll take any other questions.
Okay, does any, any um, planning commission members have any questions for Eric? Nobody? Don't hear any.
Um, Mark?
Yep.
Uh, I guess I do have one.
Okay.
Eric, where are their, where is their driveway? Is it, is it coming out of the other parcel going to be?
Yeah, the current proposal is to use Craig's driveway that comes in by his buildings. Um, but with the split, you know, they're going to have, I think, a somewhat of an informal agreement to share that. But with this, the parcel, the applicants have mentioned they were kind of conscientious to make sure that they got plenty of road frontage, should the day come that separate interests uh, um, you know, occur, so that way they could build a new driveway off of the township road that would be self-contained. So they're, they're leaving that as a option down the road, and they are aware of some of the legalethities that go along with that too.
Okay. I guess that was all I have.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Eric? Any planning commission members? Okay. If not, uh, uh, the petitioner is a petitioner here. Would you like to speak or have a representative speak?
Uh, this is, this is Jeff Rig.
Shannon.
I think the only other thing we have to add is just the purpose of the property is to for Shannon to be close to her parents and help them as, as they get older. Otherwise, from a technical perspective, Eric has covered everything. And there, um, one point is, is there actually is a driveway in, in that portion that would be sectioned off already. It's used for the field use right now.
Sometime down the road, you possibly will plan on using that.
Eventually.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, does any, uh, any of the planning commission members have any questions for?
Yeah, I've got brand new. Oh, no, brand new box of apple. I bought it myself.
I'm not hearing that. Is somebody trying to say something or?
I don't think so. I think it's background chatter.
Oh, okay. All right, so no one, no, none, no planning commission members have any questions for him? Okay, then I would be looking for a motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
Motion in the second to open a public hearing, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for or against a petition? Now's the time to speak up. Anybody see anything out there?
Not so, not so far, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Um, saying it a second time, is anyone wish to speak for or against a petition? If so, step forward, get your name and address and talk to us. I guess if we don't hear anything else, one more time. Uh, does anyone wish to speak for the petition? Time.
Close public hearing.
Okay, Steve moves to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Patrick second.
Patrick seconds. Motion in a second to close the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose.
Aye.
It passed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The background noise, at least on my end, is quite distracting. I'm not sure where it's coming from, but it's an impediment to hear and concentrate on the issues here.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you there, but I can't, does anyone know where it's coming from?
I think it might have come from the previous petitioners if they're still online, but I don't know. It sounded like a family, you know, in a, in a kitchen.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, the petitioners whose petition is being considered right now are muted. Uh, I am not seeing where this is coming from. Um, I'm not sure what to do, but we'll just ask everyone to please eliminate any background noise and uh, movement of dinner dishes and such. Thank you.
Is there any, is there any way you can control that?
We, we can, it just becomes a problem if commission members then want to speak because then uh, it can be more difficult if they've been muted by the host to
Okay.
become unmuted. So I think we just asked that if you're not speaking, please mute your mic.
Okay. All righty. All right, what are the wishes here? Now we asked for peace and quiet, now that's all we got is peace and quiet.
Where, where are we at, Mark?
Well.
Besides peace and quiet.
Hearing, we need to discuss uh, the recommendation and what we're going to do with it. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commission members? Anybody have questions, concerns?
Are they gonna, I guess I have one. Are they gonna be using their same septic, or is there going to be totally a septic and well put on this parcel?
It'll have, this is Jeff Rig, it'll have its own well and septic, separate.
Well, well and septic?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Anything about being close to the creek? Or close to the waterway or whatever they call it?
Yes, um, Chair Clark, I um, I thought there was a 75-foot setback for riparian zones that was recently um, implemented by the county. I, I can't remember, Eric, how far is the house from the creek?
Actually, the uh, setback with the shoreland ordinance is 100 feet for structures, and the applicants would meet that. But also, it is an important note that um, as far as the shoreline buffer, which affected most of the agricultural landowners and producers of cropland. This, yeah, we did then take a, an altogether, another program where we wanted to um, kind of enforce that um, no cultivation within 50 feet. So now we're looking for filter strips and grass strips and natural buffers for a 50-foot mark from the ordinary stream. So in that case, as long as they preserve the shoreline buffer, um, they're, they're doing quite a bit as far as enhancing the water quality too, if they keep, you know, keep that open field uh, buffered with a 50-foot uh, strip there from, from cultivation or, you know, from other land disturbing activities.
Yeah, I did notice that they talk about trying to preserve um, the wooded area and, you know, things that are currently existing, and, and you've probably clarified with them too, the, the importance of the, the riparian zone.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, what are the wishes?
Well, yeah, this is usually, is Kelly Sanders isn't here tonight?
No, Kelly is not here. She usually speaks up and she is missing this evening, so.
Well, then I'll do her part.
Okay.
Motion to approve the recommendation with the, uh, with the attached conditions as presented.
I second that one, Charlie.
Okay, Steve made the motion and Arlie Herbert to accept the findings of fact and the conditions for the petition, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, if not, we need to do a roll call vote for this. Uh, Steve Jacob.
Aye.
Uh, Mark Clark, I go aye. Mike Flynn.
Aye.
Pardon, I didn't hear you.
So, all right, aye, I had to unmute a couple times.
Here you go.
Did you hear it?
Byron.
Aye.
Lynn? Lynn Carlson.
Aye.
There you go. Arlie Herbert.
Aye.
And Louis, Louis Ryman.
Aye.
Here we go. Jordan Potter.
Aye.
Okay. I think it's pretty confident that it passed. Is that what you got, Stephanie?
That's what I have, yes.
So. We have noise again now, again.
Yes.
Okay, so um, is a petitioner still on there?
Yes.
Okay, so it passed this, and now it goes to the county commission. Uh, do we have a date on the county commission? When it goes to the county? You have a date for that, Stephanie or, or Kay?
My calendar shows that the second Tuesday of May would be May 11th.
Okay.
Well, it's not the very next meeting, but it's the one after that, the first meeting in May.
First meeting in May. Okay. It passed now, what we do.
Onto the.
Onto the next one. I was waiting to see them cheer, they're not cheering or anything.
Thank you. Thanks for your time, really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Bye, have a good evening.
Yep. Onto the next petition. The next petition is docket PC 041521-02. A CUP request by Chelsea Lowell, and who's handling this one?
That would be me.
This would be, yep. Okay, take it away, Lou.
Thanks, Mark. Um, so yes, this is a conditional use permit request um, to allow a commercial recreational campground um, with eight camp sites to be located within the Ag Resource Conservation Zoning District. Um, pursuant to chapter 10.4.69 of the Winona County zoning ordinance. Next slide. Um, the site is located um, right on the edge of um, the um, the city of Elba on 12 acres of land, um, just adjacent to Elba, like I said, in Elba Township in section four. Um, the address is actually located and the access to the site is located in Elba. So the address is uh, 1155 West Center Street. Um, Eltura, Minnesota, because all of Elba is um, based off of um, the um, Eltura um, addresses. So um, next slide. Um, this is a, a site plan, a rough site plan of the layout of the campground. You can see the uh, the kind of green-blue line to the right of the map um, is the uh, municipal boundary with the city of Elba on the east side and Elba Township um, on the west side. Um, in a future slide, we'll, we'll see the site plan of the Elba Township segment. But we are only concerned with the segment in the township. Um, and in that location, there is a um, existing field road um, that they would be uh, using for access. Um, campers would need to um, hike in from the parking lot in, um, at the base and would be looking to uh, do a, a short hike up the bluff to their campsites. Um, and they plan to have some bathroom facilities. Um, more of an outhouse at this point with composting toilets, um, because of the access. Um, that would probably be the most um, um, uh, the best solution for that um, in that location. Um, next slide. This is that segment within uh, the city of Elba, um, showing the access and the improvements there. There would be uh, the three yellow uh, squares represent um, camper cabins. Um, and then you can see a access drive and a small parking lot. Um, the um, um, well, we'll go to the next slide, I'll talk about um, access and other permits later. Um, like I alluded to, the site includes two parcels in Elba and Elba Township, um, campsites in the township. Campsites in the township park are hiking tents camping only. The campsites are, there's six four-person campsites and two eight-person campsites. The outhouses will have Sunmar XL, any composting toilets, which are little composting toilet units that have been around for quite some time and are registered with the state of Minnesota as a licensed product. The hiking trail is an old logging road, as I, as I said, and which will not need much in the way of additional excavation in that regard. The, the site is currently forested hillside and is being used for personal recreational uses at this time. Next slide. The Minnesota Department of Health does license these sites. Anything over five campsites is a commercial recreational campground and requires a Department of Health license. It also requires a CUP per ordinance, which is why they're, why they're here. MDH also licensed the camper cabins as lodgings, which is a slightly different license from them, but would, would be licensed nonetheless. Winona County Highway Department has issued a driveway access permit. They've reviewed it and issued a permit for that. The city of Elba has also acted, it's my understanding, and granted a conditional use permit for the segment that's within the city of Elba. Next slide. The township has, has met and discussed the petition twice. Once at their March 11th meeting and again at their April 8th meeting. They did have concerns in, in March and asked for more time. They, they had enough time before, before this meeting to get in another meeting on April 8th, at which time they, after hearing from neighbors and from emergency response folks, the local fire department in the area, decided not to recommend approval of the petition. Specifically citing emergency response limitations and access concerns, the ability for a fire department to provide services up at the campground if, if an emergency were to occur. They also cited neighbor impacts to the adjacent property owner. There's a agricultural field to the south. And those property owners apparently use that land in the fall for hunting. They were also concerned about potential campers potentially trespassing on the neighbor's property. We've received a couple of comments in addition. One from a neighbor who is not in favor. I also asked for the petition to be denied. And then there were multiple responses from the petitioner responding to the township's concerns and to the, the neighbor's concerns. So that should all be in your packets or was emailed out earlier today. And hopefully you've had a chance to have a look at that. I'll let the, the petitioner address some of those, those issues. She submitted quite a bit of information in her, in support of her petition. So I'll let her go into that later. Next slide. The recommendation, as always, is to consider all the, the entire record, all the testimony and materials and render a decision based on the criteria. If you decide to recommend approval, we have included conditions for your consideration. And with that, I will open it up if you have any questions for me or any comments at this time.
Okay, any planning commission members have any questions for Lou?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, Steve?
So, on your first slide, Lou, you showed the. Not that slide. No, it was, I think it's, there you go. So I understand, you know, I do understand that that's in the city of Elba, not in our jurisdiction. But normally, a CUP that we would issue, we would be responsible for the facility having adequate parking. And so I did drive in there today. Now, is this a, is this proposed parking? Are they gonna excavate that? Or, I mean, I didn't see any of those. I didn't, I didn't see those spots for cars there. Or am I missing something? Have you been up there, Lou? Is there, is that parking exist, or is that something that they would try to create? It didn't really seem like there's room for it.
Right, it is a small parcel in a tight location. But, um, no, they haven't begun that excavation or that started working on the project yet. I think they're waiting for approval from, from us and then from MDH before proceeding with their project.
But those three sites down below, we have nothing to do with those, right?
Correct. Our jurisdiction starts at the, at the township boundary with, with the city. So the city is responsible for this segment of the, of the project.
Okay, I've got a question for you, Lou. Can you go forward one slide, please? No, the other way. The one, there you go, that one. You don't have a map like this that shows elevations, do you? Because that would be real informative if you had elevations on that with this.
Um, I don't have it in the slideshow. Let me see, in the, in your packet. See if I, we'll get the mapping exhibit.
Mark, just to kind of give you an idea, if you go, yeah, so. You know, on that last, okay, so on that slide, where you see the green line on the screen and just to the right of the green line, that would be the hill road that ascends up a bluff.
Oh, I know, I know what it's like. I know exactly what it's like. But I'm just saying that would be of real interest here to show the elevation, the height of elevation difference between where the green line is and where the campsites are. Because I think that'll be relative in the future when somebody asks questions about safety.
Yeah, I mean, it is a, it is a steep slope. It's a, probably a couple hundred feet from the top to the, to the road. Obviously, it gets to be further, the further down the hill you go. So closer to a parking lot and the city of Elba is further from the top to bottom than it is to the west. On the west side, it might only be 100 to 150 feet from the road to the top of the, of the bluff. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any questions, any planning commissions have any other questions for Lou?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Uh, do we know, do we know what, how the city feels on their portion of it? Or do they need to approve any of that?
It's my understanding that they have considered it and granted a conditional use permit. But maybe the petitioner will be able to enlighten us in the, in that process when she has an opportunity.
Okay.
I have, I have a question for Lou.
Hey, Lynn.
Don't know if it's in your purview, but I was thinking about sugarloaf bluff, climbing sugarloaf bluff, you know? I understand the concerns about safety and emergency crews being able to get to people. The, the woman did mention in her application that the farthest emergency worker would need to walk would be approximately 2,000 feet from the parking area to reach someone on the far west side of the property. But I'm just wondering if, you know, if that's a real concern. I mean, we're surrounded by bluffs and there's, there's bluffs to climb all over the place. So is this just me, or?
Well, I mean, those were the concerns of the, those were the concerns of the township and of emergency response personnel. There, I mean, there are lots of remote area backcountry camping and hiking, you know, facilities throughout the state and the country. And I know that the, I know this is unique kind of to our area, although like Whitewater State Park has, most of the state parks have hiking campsites as well. But, um, the property owner has said that through her registration system, that folks would be signing a waiver that states that they're aware that, you know, they're in a remote area and that emergency response might not be forthcoming. And, and we also included a condition to that effect as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Lou, this is Patrick. I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, going back to what Chairman Mark said, I concur and agree with Mark as far as having an elevation-type looksee on a property like this. The other thing with the, it's an old logging road. What condition is that in? If we get three inches of rain and, you know, the runoff, et cetera, and that type of thing? How steep it is and what are the turns for those that, you know, medical personnel could get up there and that type of thing? I guess I'd like a little clarification on, on that type of thing from the petitioner, if possible, or if you can make a comment about it.
The only comment I'd make is that it's been there for, for quite some time and is a stable, is stabilized. I mean, I haven't seen any large amounts of erosion. But I mean, anytime that you're putting roads like that in, you know, best management practices, water bars, seating on those surfaces helps keep those stable and from eroding. I think the petitioner has planned on doing some improvements to that surface, although they weren't planning on doing any more, you know, cutting and grading and filling on it. So I'd let her describe the work that she plans on doing to that, I think.
Louis?
Uh, Louis Ryman here? I have a question.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep. Go ahead, Louis.
Uh, my concern goes on that EMT and stuff. Is there other things that can be done to mitigate some of this? Would like a four-wheeler or all-train vehicle be able to get up into them spots to get someone out if they're injured?
Well, I think that a four-wheeler ATV would, would definitely be able to manage that, that field road. But whether one's available and what the access is like there is, would be up to the, the property owner. And I might let her, I think, comment on that.
Well, we, you might want to consider that as a property. You might want to consider that as a backup just to get someone out of there if they're in distress. But. No, that's all I have as a concern.
Anyone else have any questions for Lou?
Yeah, Chair Clark?
Yes.
Lou, when was the last time you visited the site?
I was out there last week. I did not, I did not, I did not hike the, the road or go up to the top campground when I was there, though.
I was there this morning. It looked like very fresh excavation on a hill. So I was surprised to hear you say that it's a long-established hill road. So, I mean, and there was excavation equipment at the site. It doesn't, it didn't appear to be anything long established. And I drive a Jeep, and today I wouldn't have attempted it. I'm kind of an avid four-wheel-drive fan and have a quad side-by-side. Yeah, a lot of times here you could make that. So I guess the question for me would be, what is the timeframe that we're looking at? This would be an operation. Because if it's, it's north-facing and in the spring, it's going to be icy even to walk. I certainly wouldn't want to even send medical trying to traverse it under icy conditions at any time. If it's dry in the summertime, I wouldn't be afraid to drive it with my Jeep. But if it's greasy, yeah, it, yeah, it's a prime place for, for going, yeah. I don't know. Is, is this a year-round facility? Or is it just a short while in the summer? Or what, what, because to me, it, it's not a fit for winter.
I agree, and it's a, it's on a north, north-facing slope as well. So it's not going to get sun. And to help that dry out and, and melt snow in the winter as well. So, yeah, I'd say that's, you know, valid concerns.
All right, anybody else have anything for Lou? Okay, if we're done with Lou, then I'd ask the petitioner to please step up and, and give your speech, please, and answer some of these questions that were given here. Are you here?
Yes, hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, um, my name is Chelsea Lau. And thank you for your work on this and consideration this evening. I was jotting down some of the questions that you guys had had, and I can address those. I will just start first by kind of describing what my vision or intention is with this. And the camping is inspired by backpacking and a kind of more natural setting. So the, the people that I would be targeting to visit would be folks that enjoy hiking, you know, are expecting to be exercising. And then to be getting away from cars, pavement. This is not a place where there's going to be golf carts driving around and kids screaming and riding bikes and things like that. It's, it's going to be a quiet place. The sites are huge. The land, I actually don't have any intention of, of doing anything more to the property other than clearing some brush. The, the road, the old logging road, it has stuff that, that grows on it or whatever. And I just take a little, I forget the name of it, but it's like a weed whacker, except it, it's a piece of metal that spins. And I just, you know, kind of cut, cut down the things that are growing in there. But, but I was not intending for guests to, to drive up the hill. I think maybe there was a little misunderstanding about that. It's definitely meant to be a hike-in experience. I requested eight sites over the 12 acres, which I just kind of, I think that speaks to the quality over quantity. When you're up there, you're not going to have your neighbor on top of you. You're going to be sitting in the trees and have a nice view of the valley, was the goal. As far as the, the access, just a couple points of clarification. I actually don't have much work that is left to be done. The parking lot that was pointed out, yes, that, that piece is not finished yet. The camper cabins are just going to be on posts. They don't have a foundation or anything. So there'll be some holes that will be drilled for like the cement footings that they'll be set on. And then there will be a holding tank that will be put in there. And they'll kind of wrap the driveway up when they finish that. But, but I'm not requesting to do anything more with the land that's in the county. I have, I have a Ford F-150. And when the weather's nice, I can get my truck up the field drive. Again, as, you know, Um, again, uh, as you know, some of you had mentioned, um, the road absolutely does get muddy. Um, you know, it just, it kind of depends on the season. Um, and I would, again, absolutely no guests. I would not feel comfortable having um, a customer driving up the hill. Um, in terms of a safety plan or, or access, um, kind of from that perspective, I, I would be open, um, you know, to somebody using the road in them, in an emergency if they felt that, um, that they safely could do it. I, I don't know kind of how that would be determined or how to go about that, but I would, I would definitely consider that. Um, let's see, the, the path itself, um, kind of speaking to, I guess, how this would compare to a lots of other activities that folks do in the area. Um, the, the path is 12 feet wide minimum. It, it literally is like, it is like a field road width the whole way. Um, and yes, it's muddy and rocky, uh, you know, no denying that, but it's, it's pretty level relatively speaking, and it's very clear to see where you need to go. Um, so even once you get to the top of the hill, um, there's paths, uh, the, the hiking paths themselves are, are very wide. Um, so I just thought I would mention that as well. Um, the elevation, I believe, uh, from the bottom of the field drive uh, to the top, we're top, probably talking about maybe 280 feet, um, total elevation change. Did that address all of the, the questions that were asked?
Uh, I guess I had to ask months of operation or when, when it would be, when it would be open?
Yes, yes, and then I, I remembered another one. Um, for the hike and camping, I would be operating that when the temperatures would be above freezing. So um, like mid to late April, um, into early to mid October. Cause I need to, I want to have water available, um, and not freezing. That's important, so. Um, there was questions also about the city of Elba and I can give you some of the history on that. Um, I, I've owned um, both of these parcels for 12 years. Um, I had first approached the Elba City Council back in 2018 and um, at the time, uh, with the information that was available, I, I had communicated with the Minnesota Department of Health at that time, but I didn't have um, as much detail to my plans. Uh, I was issued a, a building permit for the camper cabins and um, the, the access uh, was considered to be primitive camping is how the um, the city had to find it at that time. Um, you know, after kind of working through, through the project, learning more things, getting more professional folks, um, septic planner, um, you know, working with the highway department, um, things evolved and I went back in September of 2020 and I got updated, um, updated building permit and an updated conditional um, use permit. Um, and there was a few requests um, related to setbacks with the buildings, um, that the uh, council had asked me to do and I did those. Um, and then I went to their m- most recent city council meeting this week again, um, to provide an update, um, kind of about this situation with the township and um, the conditional use permit. So I have, um, I have a building permit and I have a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is for a recreational campground and the lodging, and it was for doing the excavating work.
Okay. Um, does any planning commission member have any questions for Chelsea? Any other questions that uh, didn't get answers to? Okay, I don't hear any. Uh, looking for a motion for a public hearing?
I move.
Patrick second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It passed, the public hearing is now open.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I do see that Cheryl Langer has her hand up uh, from Elba Township.
Okay, we'll start with her then.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so in the original packet, the um, for the conditional use permit, the criteria to grant conditional use slash interim use, um, we were just concerned under it's, let's see, it's section 5.5.4.4, criteria for the issuance of a cond- conditional use slash interim use permit. Um, and we were concerned about item four, five, seven, nine, 12, and 13. Again, it's back to emergency response. You know, if heavy rain comes through there, um, Ms. Lau has, has um, mentioned that the path would be blocked at the bottom and Altera Fire and EMS said that they do not have an ATV or a UTV that they would be able to utilize to get up there. So they would be in full gear trying to get up to rescue anyone. Um, and they said, quite frankly, their members would be exhausted by the time they got up. So, you know, somebody falls, hits their head on a rock, um, heavy rains come through, th- those are just our biggest concerns, you know, is, is emergency response.
Okay. Anything else? That was it? Emergency response? Okay, anyone else that would like to speak for or against the petition? Please speak up now.
This is Chelsea again, and um, I guess I can ask um, Cheryl if you were able, um, you or any of the Elba Township were able to review any of my responses um, to the letter? I had just mentioned in there, I know um, there was concern about the land use rights of the neighbor particularly related to hunting. And um, I think there was just a misunderstanding um, about this 500 foot um, rule. And I did, I reviewed the um, the regulations and I called the DNR and they have, they've stated in the regulations state that a landowner, they can, they can hunt wherever they would like on their own property. It's only if you're renting hunting land from someone else or on someone else's property that you would not be able to, you know, discharge a firearm or whatever within that 500 feet. Um, so that doesn't apply to Mr. Todd.
Okay, we did not understand it that way.
I'd like to say something.
Dave?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
My name's Kelly Nessler and I'm actually a daughter of Dean Todd. And I'm just, um, would like to go back to this road that has been called an old logging existing road and I've hunted there for decades and there is no way there was ever a road there. Um, that road is new. There, it's very steep, very tall and that, that was a road, I believe, Donnie Ball used a gator on, was started out as maybe a deer trail. Um, but I, I do not see that as a safe access to those sites.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything to say for or against this petition?
Hi, Mark?
Okay, yep.
Yeah, this is Greg, I am Elba Township.
Dave?
And you know, when we were talking about that hill road, you know, when the EMT walked up there and, and Cheryl had said that they stress real heavily, you know, if you have some of the brain injury and such, but he said he would not feel, even if you could get a ATV up there, he says, which you couldn't, he said, I wouldn't be feel safe going up it or coming, especially coming down with a patient. He said, eh, eh, there's no way of bring them and there's no way across the top. And if there's future electricity or fire or having fire pits up there, the fire department has no access to the top. You know, and, and that was their biggest concern is there's no way to get across there or get them up or down.
Like I said, I know that's a really steep hill. That I know, I've not traversed it um, personally, but I, I just know that's a...
Well, all I know, the, the guy from Altera that did, and he's the youngest guy they've got, the fire chief is probably the one of the younger guys that he says that we've got, he says, in time my guys get there, he says, he says, they're going to be exhausted like Cheryl had said. And then you talk about areas where you can walk in and camp, like Whitewater does have them, but they're on flat ground. You can, you can cartway in and go to the walk-in camping sites. This is on the north side. It's, there's, in our mind, there was better places for a campground.
Okay, uh, you need to say your name and address when you talk.
Okay. Greg, I am St. Charles, Minnesota, Elba Township Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then another al- also.
You bet.
Okay.
No, go ahead, talk.
Um, I lost my train of thought there, but they were with uh, walking in and, and uh, the, the state there, when Donnie Ball bought that, that was actually owned by the state of Minnesota where he traded it for land for some other stuff. So it's, it, it's, it's a pretty tough, tough situation. And then the trespassing, being on the north side with 12 acres up there and the people they had commented liked to walk and, and, and hike and pack, where are they going to go but either the road or onto the Todd property? So I, I think long, long issues is going to be with the trespassing issue. If, if they go out to see what's there, they're on other people's property.
Well, if they're walking 2,000 feet from the parking lot and they're going up 280 feet of elevation, my guess is by the time they get to their campground, they're going to be well tired and probably asleep.
There you go, but when they get up in the morning, they're going to want to go somewhere and help take down, so it's...
Okay. Alrighty, thank you. Um, somebody has sent me a thing here, uh, they're wondering about the environmental impact of the properties below the campground in event of a heavy rain. Does anyone have any thoughts on that? Chelsea, do you want to, did they, and you, did you ever?
I would like to speak on that. Um, I, this has been brought up before, um, I've talked with the Elba City Council about this. In fact, I just spoke to the mayor, um, Jay Mollert earlier in the week, um, because there was a similar um, concern about erosion with this um, project. I believe Eric Pollan, um, a member, he's a, a resident of the city, uh, who had some comments uh, for my petition. Um, the way that the water runs, um, it, it was designed by the highway department and there are culverts, you know, and, and I don't, um, there isn't anything that I am doing to contribute to that. I, I really think it's how the, the water flows and, and the mayor, he did agree with me when we spoke about that. I said, is there anything that you think I can do? Is there anything we can do to slow the water down? I said, there isn't anything we can do to redirect it, uh, unless they redo the road. Um, but the other comment I have on that is the, the homes that are on Kiefer Drive, that the road there is in a gully. And so water, you know, water's a common enemy and it flows downhill. I, I don't know what else you would expect if you have a road, a road down there. It, the water has to go somewhere. So we've, that's definitely been brought up to me before and, and I don't believe it's something that I'm contributing to or have a bill, an ability to, um, you know, to impact.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we're still in the public hearing. Is uh, anyone else want to speak for or against the petition? Is there anyone here I can't hear? Is there anyone waving their hand, sending smoke signals? I don't know what all we can do here.
I don't see anybody, Mr. Chair, that's waving their hand. Uh, there were comments in the chat that everybody should take a look at from another member of the public, uh, Father Tim Bearden.
He doesn't want to speak? He said his microphone was disabled on my end, on our end. Stephanie, did you do that to him?
I didn't, but I just unmuted him if he would like to speak.
Okay. Are you still there?
We're not hearing him. He said he was fine, I believe.
Okay.
And, and um, the, the comment was very similar to the last one that was just addressed regarding the uh, impacts down um, um, the properties below the, the campground.
Okay. One last time then, does anyone else want to speak for or against the petition? That noise I hear or just noise?
Beeping.
Okay. Snoring? Lynn, was that you snoring? No. Okay, I'm looking for a, a motion to close the public hearing if no one else wants to speak?
Remove Patrick.
Patrick moves, who seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing? I don't hear any comments, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, now, does any um, planning commission member have any questions for the petitioner?
Well, no.
Or anybody else, or what do you want to discuss?
I, yeah. Mr. Chair. Um, hand, Mr. Chair.
Pardon?
Go ahead, Lynn.
Lynn, yes.
Um, well, I, I'm still thinking about the road. Um, you know, it sounds like there's been a lot of planning and development she's, she's put into this project and, and actually I think it sounds, it sounds like a wonderful business venture. Um, but I keep thinking about the road and I, I wonder about, you know, what other alternatives there might be if, 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 if it's a, if it's a wide trail, like a, a switchback kind of road, you know, one that angles its way up the hill. Um, I mean, she, she's gotten permits for, for just about everything and... I'm, I'm wondering why the, why the road wouldn't be serviceable.
Well, look at it.
Yeah.
Dave?
Can I ask a question? I'm, I'm sorry, this is Chelsea again.
No, you can't, not unless someone asks you a question.
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody will ask you a question.
I'll ask you a question, Chelsea.
Okay.
This is early. Is, is there any other place that you could have a road to get up to that, those campsites?
Okay, now you can answer them.
No, not on my property. Um, and I, I guess I was wondering what would, how would the group respond if the, if the road wasn't a piece of it? Uh, like, let's say it was literally just a trail up the hill.
Well, I, I guess, Mark, I don't know if I'm out of line here, but you know, I, I kind of agree there, there's, you know, there's a lot of campsites in this country that don't have first responder availability, fire trucks or anything like that. And it's not a really big issue. Um, and I guess my personal thought on this one, I, I don't feel, I do and I don't feel it's an issue, but um, I think it's a place where, you know, you're, you've, like Lynn says, she, she got all the permits, you know, everything pretty much she needs and the only issue is the safety, at this point anyway, the safety of the trail or road to get up to these campsites. And yeah, I guess accidents happen, but it can happen anywhere.
Okay, I, I guess I'd like to make a comment now as good a time as any. Right across the ridge from this campground is a lot of steps that go to a fire tower. And I don't think there's any EMT access if you're three fourths of the way up them steps or halfway up the tower and tripped and fell and hit your head, correct? How, how does EMTs get up to that fire tower? Right, and that's just across the valley and up the other side.
There is a road that comes...
There is a road that comes on the backside of that, Mark.
Okay, but still, that comes to the top, correct? To the tower? But not if you're three-fourths of the way up the steps, is my point. I mean, you know, anytime you do things like this, there's always inherent risk.
Look at the right side, they can all go downhill.
Yeah.
They can roll.
And we talked about the rain. I'm not sure if I'd rather be on the campground right next to a creek in a thunderstorm or up on the hill. I don't know. Me, I'd be safe at home in my bed, but that's me.
Mr. Chair, I agree with you. I mean, I brought up the Sugarloaf Bluff example earlier, and there are forces de major, you know, that we cannot predict, but it still sounds like it could be a wonderful, a wonderful experience for, for the hikers, or the backpackers, or the campers.
Chair Clark?
Yes.
I had, I guess, a couple of concerns. First of all, Commissioner Carlson, I had that exact same thought during the week, that, yeah, we allow hiking anywhere, and are we going to just take the whole county and have it be not accessible because somebody could have an accident? So I agree with that train of thought, but there are some things that I'm struggling with here. I think first and foremost is we're responsible for administering zoning for the townships. And to me, it's really important to have that township approval, which we don't have here. And I don't know if that would be possible or not. And I am a little bit frustrated. I don't, I think everyone's probably have visited the site. I feel like there's conflicting information here, and maybe somewhat of a manipulation of using two different authorities, being Elba Township, Elba and Elba Township. So if this were all one application, that, I think, would probably, without a doubt, exceed the 500 cubic yard limit to build. But since it's built on Elba City jurisdiction, the county doesn't have authority over it. And so then part of this campground in Elba City, part of it's in Elba Township, which we have authority over. And I was told that it's an old road that's stabilized, and I was there today, and it looked like fresh excavation. And as Commissioner, I am painting that area, and the houses directly below that, across 26, took me in their garage and showed me the siltation of more than a foot of buildup of sediment in his garage, and he couldn't get his bikes out, he couldn't use anything. So there is, there is siltation coming off that hill even before this development. But I'm struggling with the inconsistent information. Is it a new road? Is it an old road? Was it constructed for this? And I don't, I just have a hard time trying to approve something that doesn't have township. What's the sense of sending out for a township approval if we, if we're going to do the opposite of what the township likes to done in their township? And there is no hiking trail. She has no room for hiking trails. I can see that. You can hike to the campsite and have a tent, but just have access to, that's where the neighboring landowners are concerned. They have, if they want to hike anywhere, well, there's open land right there, but it doesn't belong there.
Dave?
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
This is Patrick. See, I'd like to concur what Commissioner Jacob said. As far as, you know, the township, I have some concerns about that, because those people walk the walk and know what's going on there. They live in that community. I have issues with, I guess, from my standpoint, the erosion and also the safety. I don't know, maybe I'm obsessed about that, but that's a concern for me, you know? And I think I'd like to have the, you know, the people at Elba there be dealing with an emergency if that may come. But those are concerns that I have, but I think they're realistic and they need consideration.
Okay, thank you. I would like to have Chelsea. Are you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay, I would like either you or Lou to tell me, not on the, not on the city side, but on the township side, how much excavating has to be done to complete this? Not on the city side, where the line is drawn between the city and township, on the trail that takes you up to the campsites. How much excavating has to be done to make that trail or road or whatever passable or make it work or?
Oh, there is no, no more excavating that needs to be done. I was up there with my pickup truck earlier in the week. And that is, I think there are several people that have been down there, but they haven't actually walked up to the top. And I do think that that would be very beneficial. There is definitely fresh excavating down on the Elba portion of the land. I had, I'll try to be quick about it, but when I purchased the property, there was a field drive that was on the west side of the property. I believe the permit was issued to the previous owner. That driveway was in a gully, and it was eroding. Rocks were coming out on the highway. It was not a suitable site for a field drive. So a lot of what the work I did with David Kramer, the engineer from the highway department, was to figure out how I could still have access to my property. And so I ended up getting the driveway permit. And then also, again, through the conditional use permit that I had from the city of Elba, I had asked to change the bottom of where that field drive is. There's actually, you can see them on the topography maps, kind of the layout. There's, there are roads on that property, and they did terminate down on that Elba parcel, but the grade on that was like 25%. It was, it was very steep. And so we, I don't know what the grade is on it now, but it's much less than it was. And so there's, there's a first part of the road that's in the city that was excavating, that was done recently. So that is a true statement. And if you keep walking, you'll get to a part that's old, and you can tell, you know, just by looking at the rocks and the road, it has lots of things growing on it, and it changes. And so you can see kind of where that ended, and there's nothing further to do with that. That work was done last year.
Okay. Yeah, and I'd just like to add, this was, I've been talking with Chelsea for a couple of years now on this, on her proposal here. And that was one of the first things that I brought up was the slopes, because it does cross designated bluffs. And discussing that access. And if you look at the aerial photos, which we don't have available for you right now, but if you look on Beacon even, you can see clearly that there is an old road there. And that's in the 2016 aerials. You can also see it in the contour lines, which are from 2008. So that's, that road or that access that was cut, I mean, it looks to me like a logging road. And I would say that it definitely predates 2008, so.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other discussion?
Yes, Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
I have a question for Lou Overhawke. What is the criteria or the threshold for how many sites a person can have without a CUP? You have a couple, three sites or something, or?
For a campground?
Yeah.
It's, five is the threshold. So once you hit five or higher, it's a conditional use permit or a Minnesota Department of Health license is required. If you're less, if you're at four, that's, neither one of those are required.
So the way it stands, if we did nothing, she's already approved for the three down below. Three, four up above, and we have nothing to say about that, right?
That would, that would be my, my take on it, yeah.
Dave? Again, does anyone else have anything to discuss on this petition?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lynn?
Just so I understand Lou and Steve's conversation clearly, so seven campsites, does that limit the number of people? Her proposal's pretty specific about how many people per site. I'm just curious.
That's now what ordinance or the definition for commercial recreational campground states. It doesn't get into the number of people per site. It just says number of campsites.
Okay. So if it, if it doesn't have a people limit, then that's only one less than what she proposed, or am I not reading? Excuse me?
It'd be three less than she proposed.
Three less.
She can, she already has approval for the three down below, and she can have four up above.
Yep, okay.
Is the petitioner aware that she can have those four without going?
Yes, and that was my plan. If this wasn't approved, I still intend to do four campsites, yes.
Dave? Any other questions, concerns, discussions, ideas, plans, direction?
Well, I do have one more thing to say, which probably isn't going to be active on, Mr. Chair. What Steve said about the township not supporting the project. The first thing that came to my mind was how many times in the last few years the Planning Commission made a decision on a project, and then by the time it got to the county commissioners, it was acted on differently than the recommendation. So I don't know. I don't know. Seems like it happens at just about any level as far as what one group wants to do and what another group ends up doing.
All right. If there's no more discussion, we're looking for a direction. Anybody? I hear a dog chirping up, but besides that, is there anybody on the, on the Planning Commission that would like to speak?
Yeah, this is Mike Flynn. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this petition for conditional use along with the findings of fact, and there are seven conditions.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to accept the findings of fact and the conditions and pass it. Did you want to go through it line by line, or are we good to just take the whole thing as it is?
The motion was to take the whole thing as it is, from my understanding.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. Stephanie, you want to read it, please?
The motion, as I understand it, would be to accept the findings of fact as presented and recommend approval with the conditions recommended.
Yes. Okay, everybody got that? Now we'll do a roll call vote. Steve Jacob?
Aye.
Hey, Mike Flynn?
Aye.
Aye, there you go. Patrick?
Aye.
Lynn?
Patrick, nay.
Patrick was nay?
Correct.
Okay. Lynn?
Aye.
Hey, Arlie?
Aye.
Louis? Louis? Can somebody hear Louis or not?
Did he mic? Did he have to unmike or unmute?
Is he still on? I can't even see if he's still on or not.
I'm not seeing him still in the list, Anna or Kay. Am I incorrect on that?
Hey?
I'm scanning rapidly, Mr. Chair. I do not see him at this time.
All right, we'll go to Jordan.
Aye.
Aye. And I will also go aye. And I have the ayes of having it, correct? Stephanie?
My count would be six to two in favor.
Yes. Okay, six to two in favor. It passed. And this also will come in the, is it May 11th? County Commissioner meeting? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
That would be correct.
Thank you. I believe we're done with that one.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now we're up to docket PC041521-03. That one's misnumbered on your screen.
It sure is.
That's okay. We'll forgive you.
We'll just ignore that. I didn't do these. I'm just the screen sharer.
Okay.
So much for my proofreading skills.
We'll forgive her today, okay? Okay, staff, who's got this for staff?
I do.
Eric.
Okay, Eric. Take it away, Eric.
Okay, I guess I'll just go through these PowerPoints. I want to, I guess, stress that this is, could be reviewed as a conditional use or an interim use permit. There's a number of details and points that are made out in the staff report and in the findings of fact and the conditions. And I think that will be, whatever direction the Planning Commission decides, that will be one of the factors that they will have to discuss on what would be the most appropriate given the circumstances. Okay, for 1521, number three, the request is Henry Yoder and Elmer Yoder to allow a dog kennel in Utica Township pursuant to 10.4.6, number 14, in the Winona County zoning ordinance. The situation is such that the current property owner is Elmer, and his son, Henry, wishes to work his way into the farm and purchase the property. So in order to process this application, we requested that both the current owner, Elmer, and the proposed owner, the son, Henry, sign on as co-petitioners in regards to this application. Next slide, please. The acreage you can see is very vertical in nature. It's a series of quarter-quarter sections that run from south to north. The existing Yoder building site is off of Sandstone Drive. The address is 16752. If I could go to the next slide, I'll continue zooming in on the site in question. Okay, the Planning Commission, yeah, I guess, well, this is kind of a zoom in of the existing aerial. In this case, the petitioners have stated there is a 40 by 58 existing agricultural building that's currently machinery and hay storage that they wish to renovate and make improvements and make that the new kennel facility from this acreage. Next slide. What is important to note is that in 2015, Henry, the same petitioner as was on tonight, received a conditional use permit for a similar operation in Section 31 located along County Road 3033. At that, this point, that conditional use, number 1194, was recorded as a conditional use permit that therefore there is no termination date associated with that. We've asked the applicant what his intentions are of his existing property that's roughly a mile, mile and a half away. And it's not certain whether a new owner will continue, but it's not prohibited according but it's not prohibited according to the terms of the conditional use permit or prohibited that a new owner continue with the conditional use permit as the conditions that were stipulated into that. So, in discussions with the applicant, you know, I guess, this goes to the concern of land uses in this type of operation and essentially density when it comes to dog kennels and placements of these. The County Planning Commission and the County Board could take a different route at this point in time because in 2015, we did not have interim use permits as an alternative or an option to consider them. So, since that time, we have now put that into our ordinance. So, that is, I think, a fair discussion point tonight when we review this type of application. Next slide, please. And again, the staff has recommended a condition that we reviewed it and had language that would be consistent with an IUP concept and that there could be a termination event that could discontinue the permit should the property be offered for sale or transferred to a new owner, which would be construed as an identifiable event for the permit in case. Next slide. The applicants did meet with the Utica Township during their March meeting, and they have received no comment in regards to that section from Utica Township. There has been some written comments received from a neighbor. I guess I'd point to the Kiefer email that you may be in possession of. They have concerns about barking noise and animal welfare. Next slide. Again, the disclaimer is, consider all testimony materials before making the findings of the criteria to support the Planning Commission's recommendation. If the decision is to ultimately recommend approval, staff has included conditions for the Planning Commission's consideration. Next slide. Any questions at this point?
Any Planning Commission members have any questions for Eric?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Lynn.
This is a point of procedure, I'm curious. You mentioned the Kiefer's email. Is that something that also gets sent to the petitioner to read and address?
I did discuss that with the petitioner today verbally. Because of the disconnect, I think, with electronic communication with the applicant and some of the abilities that, that was discussed verbally with the petitioner.
Okay, so, were you satisfied with the information he resupplied in response?
I guess, Lynn, that might be better directed to the petitioner, I guess. You know, I hate to really relay verbatim, verbal communication. So, I think, you know, you might want to take that up with the petitioner.
Okay.
Eric, I have a question for you, this is Patrick, if I may. How, the petitioner that I have a copy of in front of me here, how far or how close does he live to the proposed, to the current facility?
Well, currently, he resides, you can see on the application, he's indicated his current address is 27167 County Road 33, and that's approximately a mile and a half from this located property of his father's located at 16752 Sandstone Drive.
The comment that Mr. Kiefer made, is that related to the father's established kennel? Or the one that's proposed?
There's no kennel at the father's location at this time. There is an existing approved kennel through a conditional use permit in 2015 at Henry's current residence located. And I believe, if I read the comments, they were intended for Henry's existing property. But, again, I would ask the petitioner, he would like to probably elaborate on that point.
Okay, fair enough.
Any other Planning Commission members have any questions for Eric?
One more.
Okay, Lynn.
I recognize the name. We had a recent permit approved in the last couple of years. Am I remembering the Yoder name? Or is there extended family in the community and it's another family?
If I understand the question, Lynn, are you talking about the Yoder name? That is a predominant name out in Utica and St. Charles and Saratoga Township. Many, many relatives reside in the Amish community in that part of the county.
Okay, yeah, I just remembered doing a permit recently. Okay, thanks, pass.
Eric and Kay, this is Patrick again. This has been an issue here a number of years ago at a county board meeting when we were at the old facility. Has the county made periodic visits to these, to this facility? And have there been any other complaints in that interim time over the last, let's say, last few years? About the operation, the noise, odor, anything like that? And again, random inspections and the like, we could just get an update on that?
Yes, after the number of them that we approved in 2015, we, as a county, did regular inspections on all the facilities for approximately a year and a half, two years after that. And the inspections that we conducted found everything, on the most part, was meeting all criteria that we had passed as conditional use permitting. As far as the animal health and welfare, please keep in mind that those inspections are done by two other government entities, which if you have a license to engage in animal or actually dog kennel businesses, you do have to abide by the USDA, which I believe they do regular inspections, as well as the Minnesota Animal Health Board, which does annual inspections. So, any operator of these type of facilities are subject to both state and federal inspections. Part of what they look at is food, the animal welfare, heat, water, exercise, and basically veterinarian science protocol, which the applicants have submitted with their packets on their frequencies of vet visits and to make sure shots and everything from claws, teeth and other health aspects are looked at with the individual animals.
Is the county privy to those two state entities, their observation notes and that type of thing?
We have been, but we haven't been recently in receipt of any, in the real recent frequency of it. To answer your other part of the question is, no, we have not received any complaints on other aspects of that. So, the ones that we have permitted, we have not received actionable complaints.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Carly McGinty, our feedlot officer, can also respond to Mr. Byron's questions if need be. I know she's on the line. The Board of Animal Health, if they find violations, they send inspectors back to see if they're cleared up, and she knows the protocol and communicates with them if needed. We, of course, do not have veterinary staff, and so, conditions relating to animal health, you know, added to zoning applications are not where those kinds of inspections lie. You know, if something gets built and we need to ensure that before we give them a development certificate that they have an animal exercise area that's built, you know, per their plans and per what a Planning Commission and a County Board approved, you know, that's another matter. So, anyway, Carly is standing by if there's any further questions, thanks, I'll get off now.
Okay, shall we listen to Carly quick? Do you know anything, any, anything about these at all as far as problems they've had?
One thing I will say is that the inspection reports are public information. They do have a website on the USDA, on their website, and all you need is their client number, so you can go through and read every inspection report. And they inspect at least once a year, the USDA does. And the Board of Animal Health inspects at least once a year. And they go through all of their veterinary records on site with the owner at the time of inspection.
But you haven't heard of any issues or problems with that facility, correct?
Correct, I have not received any complaints on any facilities thus far.
Are you, this is Patrick, are you privy to those reports, whether they're positive, negative, or in between?
They do not send them to us, but like I stated earlier, they are available online with their ID number.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
All righty. Any other questions for Eric? If not, hello, who's that?
Steve Jacob.
Okay.
Eric, I'm trying to fully understand, the old facility is, is he saying that he want, what I'm understanding is he is not intending to run both the old site and the new site, but he doesn't want to relinquish his CUP at the old site in case someone wanted to buy it and use it for that purpose? Or is, or do you think he's intending to use, to start operating two sites?
I believe, and again, this might probably be a better question for Henry. I think he's leaving his options open that if he does sell his place on County Road 33, that he's got considerable investment in that facility already as a kennel, and he could potentially sell it as a turnkey operation to a new owner.
I don't think that was the answer to my question. The answer I'm looking for is, if he builds a new site, is he definitely selling the old site? Or could, is he potentially asking to operate two sites simultaneously himself?
That's not what he represented. I think he is selling the existing site, and as I mentioned, I believe he's keeping his options open that if a owner comes along. I don't believe there's been a determined purchaser of the property yet, but if he gets the right buyer, yes. I think they want to continue operating under that conditional use permit that's on that site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other Planning Commission members with any questions for Eric? All righty, if not, would the petitioner like to speak? Tim, are you there?
Just go ahead and take it.
Henry?
Hello, yeah, this is Henry.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, speak up.
I don't know what I want to say. I'm planning to sell my old property, I guess. And I'm not, I'm not planning to run two kennels. I just want to have one on the property I'm moving on. And if somebody buys the old property and they want to, they want to have the kennel to continue in business, I guess that's going to be up to them. So.
Okay. All right, does any Planning Commission members have any questions for the petitioner?
This is Patrick, Mr. Yoder.
Yeah, this is Mike Flynn.
Oh.
Patrick, Patrick, you got the floor first.
Oh, good, okay, all right, thank you. Well, Mr. Yoder, I'm looking at this commentary or the objections here for your proposed conditional use permit from Mr. Kiefer. It's my understanding that you have communicated with him regarding these. Could you kind of fill us in on your discussion on that? Your conversation with him about some of the concerns that he has laid out in writing here?
I did not talk with Kiefer. I talked with, I talked with Eric, and he just brought it to my attention. But I do not have any dog like that, and I do not know what he's talking about as far as that dog goes, whatever breed he thought it might have been. Kind of a brownish reddish Australian, Australian Shepherd or whatever it's called. And as far as I'm concerned or know of, there is not a dog on my property that looked like that. So, I'm not sure, is he talking about my dad's property? That could have been. He's got a, he's got an Aussie dog on his property. So, I'm not aware of what happened, but Eric brought it to my attention, so that's all I know about.
Okay, what is the distance between your facility and your father's facility from this, Mr. Kiefer? Do you know where he lives?
Yeah, from my facility to his property.
Right, where he would be, you know, in a position to make a comment about your operation? Is it, give me some sense of the distance there?
Excuse me, he's probably approximately about a mile from my property.
From yours, and what about your father?
Mile and a half.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mike, you got a question?
Yeah, I just wanted Henry to tell us how big his proposed dogs will be. I see he emphasized Yorkie, and I know they're a cute little dog, but Henry, can you tell us about how big they are?
Oh, they, on average, they're anywhere from six to 10 or 11 pounds.
So, they're a small dog, is what you're telling us?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Anybody, any other Planning Commission member have any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I do.
Lynn?
I thought I was muted. Mr. Yoder, I'm just curious, I'm a little familiar with the Utica area, I mean, at least as a kid, you know, 40 years ago, but do you have coyotes that come through? I'm just curious, you know, back to that neighbor's comment, if he was, you know, not even seeing a dog.
We do have coyotes. I very rarely see any, but you hear them sometimes at night.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? If not, they need a motion to open the public hearing.
A move, Patrick.
Patrick moves, and Lynn seconds it. Open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. It passed, the public hearing is now open. Uh, anyone that would like to speak for or against a petition, please make a sign, call or yell, wave, I don't know, whatever you can do. Anyone? Anyone see anything out there? Okay, I will ask one more time. If anyone wishes to speak for or against this petition, the Yoder Dog Kennel. Okay, Lynn? No. Okay, I thought you were waving at me. Okay. Anyone in the public wants to say anything? Okay. Third and final time. Does anyone want to speak for or against a petition? Okay, do you see anyone out there waving or flashing or anything?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We'll consider that the three times and need a motion to close the public hearing?
A move. Patrick.
Patrick moves and.
And Flynn.
Mike Flynn seconds it. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 All say nay. It passed. Okay, discussion. What do y'all think?
Can I make a pun?
Sure.
I think we're going to the dogs.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, certainly. I got a question for Eric.
Okay, Eric. Shoot.
Um, you know, we, we've got a lot of these dog kennels out there and, yeah, the USDA inspects them, but we never know that they're inspected. Is there any way that, you know, that we give them the CUP with the condition that they send us a copy of their, uh, you know, inspection form, what they have inspected every year to put with their CUP?
We can put the request in, but dealing with other state entities, it's sometimes tough to get information, especially on a regular basis. Um, I think if there's specific complaints, as Carly mentioned, there is a way to track down each site to get to, um, get to that. We did have a complaint, I believe, uh, earlier this year where we did, um, look at it, but a lot of the information and the complaints are, um, missing pieces of information. So there's a good share of sleuth work that has to be done, but if we see a clear cut issue that's actionable, yes, I mean, the county would, would take interest on it. Um, a lot of the noise and welfare and things to that nature falls under the sheriff's department. So, you know, as you can imagine, some of the, a lot of the aspects can occur after hours or on weekends and your sheriff's department are the first line to respond. They do have a, a, um, basically a noise viol- or a barking dog ordinance that, uh, is essentially the, the framework for keeping peace in the neighborhood out there in the rural part of the county that if there's dogs running out large or dogs barking non-stop, they have, um, a certain protocol that they can warn the property owner and, uh, they could be potentially, um, given a citation for, uh, violating the, the noise and barking dog part of it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I could add on to that real quick. Um, the.
Who, who's talking? Name and address.
It's Carly.
Carly, sorry Carly. I thought you were a neighbor.
Um, the USDA and the Board of Animal Health will not just send us inspections if we put that on there, but they do provide a copy to the applicant. So the applicant could, that could definitely be a condition added that they need to provide us with it, but those two entities would not just give it to us.
Mr. Chair, uh, in terms of, uh, planning and zoning, um, needing to either second guess, uh, Board of Animal Health, uh, you know, trained, either trained veterinarians or folks that are trained specifically in animal health, uh, which is not part of planning and zoning or even feedlot permitting, um, it, it, it would be informational but not actionable. So, you know, the, the two entities that do the inspections and if they find violations, go back and follow up are doing that already. And, and so, um, us being added to the mix unless there's an abuse situation that's obvious that the sheriff would get involved in, or as Eric has pointed out, barking dogs, um, you know, it would be, uh, I guess, not a, a substitute at all for the Board of Animal Health or the, the work that's currently being done to have, um, planning and zoning staff involved in the he- animal health aspect of things. Thank you.
A quick question for you, Kay or Carly. I'm not sure which one. Is there any way that someone gets missed, meaning they have a dog kennel, but they don't get, um, inspected by the animal health or who makes sure, or you know what I mean? Who makes sure that the, that if they have a, a kennel, that they get inspected?
If they are licensed through, they need to be licensed through the USDA and the Board of Animal Health. They both, they, it's both, it's a condition of both those licenses that they will come out there and do that. I don't, um, anticipate that they would be missed by both of those entities. Um, but there's always that chance that someone doesn't get a license. So that would be the only time that I could see that happening.
So that would be, you know, I understand that that's kind of their department and, and not, not like Kay said, per view of the county.
Yes, we are not in charge of animal health, just like I'm not in charge of livestock's health. I'm, we're here for zoning purposes and building purposes. Um, we are definitely mandated reporters if we see something that we don't like or if something is unhealthy. But again, it's not our regulatory authority to punish that action.
Okay. Thank you.
Carly, uh, are we here?
Mr. Chair. Yes.
Uh, who's up?
Early.
Okay. Uh, Carly, I got a question. It, they, they are inspected yearly though?
Um, they are inspected annually by the Board of Animal Health and the USDA. Those are separate inspections.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who's trying to talk?
Mr. Chair, Mike Flynn.
Okay, Mike, okay.
I think that, I, I'm just responding to this concern, but I do believe under the conditions of four, seven, and nine, that that covers adequately what we need to do as a zoning and planning board. Do we need more than that? You know, if we can't do it with those three items, I don't know how long we can make the list.
Right.
Make it satisfy every possible in and out.
All right. Any other questions, concerns, discussion? Louis, did you want to say something? Oh?
No, I made my one pun.
Okay. I thought maybe you had another one.
Well, maybe, but I better think about that one before. It might be off colored.
All right. Any other discussion or what, what are the wishes, people?
I'll call for the vote.
This is Mike Flynn. Nobody's jumping. I'm going to make a motion that we accept the findings of fact and that we approve this petition with, with the following conditions listed.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, Early.
Second.
Okay. Early Herbert seconded. Any discussion?
I got one from Mike. Are you, are you still on Hawaii?
No, but I'm delighted because my internet is huge, so I got a long delay. I'm not too far from you.
Oh, okay.
I'm one of those broadband people that's waiting.
Oh, okay.
All right. We will now hold the vote and, uh.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, this is Patrick here. Um, just, I wanted to bring up a finding of fact here, number four. Um, I just have some concerns about that, um, and how it's, uh, stated there is not a reasonable related to the overall needs of the county and to the existing land use. Uh, that's just a, um, I guess this whole operation, uh, I just have concerns about, about it. Um, under the auspices of number four there, so.
What are your concerns?
Well, it's, you know, what does it say there? There's a lot of, okay, another form of income, uh, not demonstrated how the proposed kennel and demand for the animals is reasonably related to the needs of the county and existing land use. And stated there, the use is not reasonably related to overall needs of the county and to the existing land use. In light of, uh, you know, I was hoping to get some, uh, discussion or at least some information on, uh, Mr. Keeper's, uh, concerns, uh, either from, um, Mr. Yoder Senior or Mr. Yoder Junior, uh, on, on those concerns that were, uh, sent to us. That's what I have to say.
Damn. Any other concerns, questions?
Uh, Eric, I have one for you. Eric, Mr. Chair. Uh, Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Uh, did you talk with Keeper today?
No, I didn't. I talked with Henry.
Oh, okay. All right. I had misunderstood that.
No, I was working off of the email that the planning director had received, so I, uh, brought that up with the applicant.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Okay, if not, then I think we have to vote. There's a, Stephanie, want to read the motion, please?
Um, it would be a motion to adopt the findings of fact as presented, recommend approval with the conditions identified.
Okay. Steve Jacob?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Flynn? Patrick Byron?
Nay.
Nay. Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Early Herbert? Early, you're muted. Take it off, mute Early. There you go.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Louis?
Aye.
Aye. And Jordan?
Aye.
Okay, I also vote aye. So it's all but one. So it passed. Okay, and this too, I assume, is brought forth on the May 11th County Commissioner meeting?
That would be correct.
One more hurdle to jump.
[laughing]
Okay, that's the end of that one. Now, we will start docket PC 04152104. And I believe Megan has this one, correct?
That's right. Can you hear me okay? Very good. So, uh, tonight we're looking at a interim use, um, petition by Dennis and Cindy Sue Glave to allow for, um, actually it's a retail store in a temporary building. Uh, they make, um, well, Cindy Sue creates quilts and other quilted, um, art or objects. They'd also like to sell artwork from local artists and books that Dennis Glave writes. Um, they're proposing to place a modified cargo container next to their residence. This request is pursuant to 9.13, which is the temporary small business ordinance and 5.54 of the, the zoning ordinance. Next slide. Uh, this site is located, um, on Pickwick Loop Road, right off of County 7 before reaching, um, Pickwick. Um, the address is located here. You can see the, the red box indicates the proposed location of the cargo container. Uh, next slide. Um, we did receive, uh, the township acknowledgement form on the 12th with, uh, an approved, um, an approval of this, this project. And you guys should have received that as a, an additional email that Ann had sent out. Next slide. Um, so Dennis and Cindy Sue Glave currently reside onsite. Uh, they've been there for many years and they are proposing use of a cargo container as the, of the best way to temporarily have a retail store selling their goods, um, that are produced outside the household. And I mention that because if they were all produced within the household, um, that would not have required a conditional use permit. It would have went through, uh, 9.12. But since they are selling goods outside of the house, uh, that's why the, the interim permit is required. They're not proposing any water or septic onsite, uh, just a container measuring 20 feet long, eight feet wide, and eight feet tall. There will be two, uh, parking spaces that are designated for clientele. There are no employees and it's only family working at the business and their hours are during the week. Let's see here, Monday through Friday, 10 to 2, and weekends by appointment. Uh, they're, they're proposing a sign at the mailbox and then one next to the container, um, along with some lighting right at the driveway. Next slide. This is this, the proposed site and container location for their, the temporary store. Um, I wish I could show you with my cursor, um, but the, the, the site puts, the proposal puts it into an area that would require, um, a retaining wall and stormwater drainage plants. Um, and if you, I'm not sure what the next, could you go to the next slide to see if we have a better overhead view? Very good. So the container is shown in red and the light blue is just an idea of the, the size of the retaining wall, the proposed retaining wall, um, that we need to go in to suit the location that they initially, um, came to us with. However, I did receive an email on Tuesday from Mr. Glave that stated he's also concerned about the slope and embankment, um, around the container and he's willing to work with us to see that it doesn't become a problem. One simple solution is to move the container out from the bank so that cut in the retaining wall would not need to be so high. Um, so we do have that, uh, that just came in as well as some comment. And I do believe Mr. Glave, Mr. and Mrs. Glave are on the line, so they could answer some questions as well. Um, and one more comment is that you'll note that if the retaining wall does go down all the way to the end of the driveway, an easement with a neighboring family member would be needed. Next slide. So this use does appear to be consistent with, uh, the comp plan statements in support of, um, promoting diversified economic development, a small startup retail store, um, selling mostly local goods. Next slide. And with that, do you have any questions?
Hey, does any planning commission member have any questions for Megan?
Megan, this is Patrick. I have one for you. Um, anticipating, uh, you know, uh, to start a business here is, and, you know, people coming to check it out, et cetera, and that type of thing. In, in your estimation, is there sufficient and safe, uh, area for like turning around and backing out and, you know, traffic coming, going? traffic coming, going, and that type of thing? What is your thoughts on that?
Well, if you could, um, Stephanie, could you back up to an overhead view? You can look at that. It's probably the best one that we have, right there.
Right, okay.
Um, so that this is, uh, this is a slope, this is a slope up to the house. But there is a two-car garage there that does provide, when I visited, it would have been enough if I were to park in front of the garage. I, there's plenty of room to back up then and go forward down the driveway. So I do believe there's enough room for that.
Okay. With, with even, uh, a number of cars there, would there be any description on, you know, maybe how people should park, you know, when they come, so they don't get jammed up in there and safety issues and that type?
That's a good point. Um, they've designated two sites for parking. So with that, there, I don't think that there would be much room, for example, to store a family car in the driveway. They would have to be stored in, uh, in the garage.
Okay. I'm just trying to, you know, assist them with some, you know, thoughts on, you know, cause you, you know, something like that, it sounds like a, you know, viable opportunity and people are going to come and check it out, but making sure that, you know, can they get close enough and turn around and et cetera, and that type of thing, so that they would want to come back, you know?
Right, right.
Like, what they like, if they see, you know, like what they see there. So that's just a thought.
Okay, good point.
Anybody else? Any other Planning Commission members have any questions for Megan? Okay, I don't see any. Oliver, if you have one, I don't see anybody else. Okay, um, the petitioner, would the petitioner like to speak now and let us know their, uh, thoughts and ideas and plans and dreams and whatever? Are they on? There we go.
Yeah, you generated. Uh, yes, there is room for turning around that we, it's a two-car garage, we both parked inside. So if you pull up to the garage, which is paved, there is plenty of room for backing up and turning around. And I don't anticipate more than two, two vehicles at a time.
Okay. You know, word gets out, I hate to, you know, have them all backed up to, you know?
You gotta remember, this is all handmade, so these hands can only do so much.
All right, well, kudos to you for attempting that too, so.
All right, I would have one comment about the, uh, retaining wall. If you can go back one picture, the first one that kind of shows
The hillside.
The hillside.
There you go.
Yes, there's a drainage pipe there. Um, I have that installed to drain the water from half of the roof. And what I, what I would like to do is bring the retaining wall straight out from there and actually put a sidewalk above with a trench drain in it so that most of the water coming down the hill from the LP tank would drain through that sewage pipe. That pipe will go underneath the driveway and drain down toward Loop Road. Uh, I've lived in this house for eleven years. We've actually had water in our basement almost half a dozen times. So every time we have water in our basement, I always go out and look for things to improve the runoff so that water doesn't come in the house. And I, I've actually learned quite a bit in the last ten years. The one thing I would say is that we actually took some of this dirt away from the hillside six years ago. And I was thinking it would help erode some of that, so it'd be a lot easier to move the bank back. Very little of that hill has eroded in those six years. That is a very hard-packed clay. So I think, uh, if, if I can keep the water above it, I don't think we'll have any problems with the retaining wall in that area.
Anything else? That's it? Any, any, uh, any Planning Commission members have any questions for the applicants?
When is your open house?
Well, it's all pending because my brother-in-law, uh, is the carpenter that builds the containers to spec for what I want. And right now, it's on hold until we get approval from you guys.
Okay, all right.
And we're looking possibly September to get it moved in, but then we will be doing more work inside of it.
Great.
So lethal.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Um, open the public hearing. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Certainly, Patrick. Uh, Patrick seconds.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to open the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is open. Uh, would anyone like to speak for or against the petition? I'm not hearing anything. Is anyone, Kay, are you hearing anything out there? Anybody?
I am not, Mr. Chair.
Aye. I'll say it again. Does anyone want to speak for or against the petition? Please now speak now. One more time, does anyone want to speak for or against the petition? Now is your time to speak or forever hold your peace. I'm hearing nothing. Anybody hearing anything? Flickers, flashes?
No hands raised. I don't see.
Raise.
Motion to close the hearing.
Okay, Mike mo- moves to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Patrick.
Patrick seconded it. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, will all the motion, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Nay? Okay, it passed. The public hearing is now closed. All right. Oh boy. Okay. Any discussion? Anyone have any comments, thoughts, ideas, plans? Everyone's not asleep, are they? No, I think most of them are still awake.
Nope. I'll make a motion to adopt the findings of fact and to approve the, uh, petition for interim use permit and to, as long as the conditions are met.
Second, Patrick.
Okay, Mike made the motion and Patrick seconded. Is there any discussion? Anybody see any discussion that I'm not seeing? All right. And we will do a roll call vote again. Uh, Steve Jacob.
Aye.
Uh, Mike Flynn.
Aye.
Patrick Byron.
Aye.
Lynn Carlson.
Aye.
Carly.
Aye.
Someone better wake Carly.
Sorry, brother.
Louis?
Aye.
Aye, there we go. And Jordan?
Aye.
Aye. And I also go aye. So it's unanimous. Congratulations, good luck. Uh, it will be May 11th, I think, is when your last hurdle is, the County Board meeting?
At nine AM.
At nine AM. All right, thank you all, and what's next? Now we are up to update, it's Board of Adjustment. There was no meeting this today, correct, Jordan?
Correct.
Okay, that's easy for you then.
Yep.
And Steve, the County Board update, please.
Uh, County Board approved the Carr Solar Farm application, so I think that's the only thing we had from this group to the County Board.
Okay. I saw in the paper there were a few other things you discussed, but you don't want to bring them up now, huh?
Is there any questions, anyone else?
Uh, just talking about the jail.
Oh, okay.
But that, that's a story for another day, I'm afraid. All right, anybody else have any questions for Steve or anything else on the County Board stuff? If not, I would call for adjournment.
So move.
Okay, do we need to do all that for adjourning, or do we just adjourn?
No. All righty.
Aye.
See you guys in a month.
Yes, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night all.
Good night.
Aye.
Thanks for your time.